Good afternoon, everybody. To the City Council of the City of Callexico, special meeting, October 1st, 2012. It is now 5:14 PM here at the Fernando Nene Torres Council Chambers. Deputy Clerk, note the attendance, Les Councilman Castro. If we can go to the Pledge of Allegiance, if we can be led by Chief Newjar.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, move by Mayor Protem Ortado, second by Councilman Hodge. Please press the button to display your vote. Okay, being that today is a special meeting, we will not be conducting the portion of the public comments, but when we go to the business item, all the speaker forms will be acknowledged. Okay, business item, consideration to revoke the certificates of public convenience and necessity for Callexico Transit System, direct to City Manager.
The item that you have before you today is an item that will address the bus service that we have here in town, and I will let Legal go ahead and provide. Our Chief, are you going to provide the procedure that we're going to go through? Are you going to provide the procedure? Who speaks for a second? I'll let the City Attorney then provide the procedure that we're going to go through on this hearing.
Sure. Lisa Foster filling in for Jennifer Lyant tonight. The procedure, this is a public hearing, and the way that we are going to conduct the public hearing is to first hear a staff report from the Chief and from David Stotland from the Attorney's Office, who jointly prepared the staff report. After the staff report, the license holder, the certificate holder, will have an opportunity to do a presentation. Typically, that would be up to 15 minutes for that, and then at that time, we will take any public speakers that want, that have turned in a speaker slip that want to be heard. Once a public hearing is closed, the Council will deliberate.
Thank you. Chief?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. What we're here tonight for is to talk about a, at this point, a violation of city ordinance. The city ordinance requires that a person who has a certificate of convenience and necessity under the city municipal code requires that certificate holder to maintain insurance while they're operating under the city certificate. It came to the city's...
Attention?
Attention. Good idea, thanks. Attention that, at some point in the past, that there may have been a lapse or a failure to cover the insurance policy of the bus company as of a certain date. Through investigation, we were able to find that our paperwork shows that since December of 2011, that the certificate company, Callexico Transit Imperial Rapid Services, failed to maintain insurance coverage until just recently. The city ordinance requires that when a violation of city ordinance does occur, we are required to bring it before Council and Council to determine what to do about that violation, basically, just like a court case, and that is what brings us here today. The certificate of public convenience and necessity was issued to Callexico Transit System almost 50 years ago. That company has maintained or been in the family, changing ownership from one Castro to the next, ultimately to the third Castro, and that is where we are today. The official documents of the city show that the change of ownership from Senior Castro, the grandfather, to the son, Luis Castro, occurred in front of Council and with Council resolution. The ultimate change of ownership occurring, I believe, about six, seven years ago changed, and we don't have a change of ownership in the file. So at this point in time, there's not, it's unclear in our documents who is actually the owner of the business, and so that was one of the things that's lacking, that we ultimately have to determine who's, whether Callexico Transit or whether Imperial Rapid Service is actually the company of record. All of the certificates that are possessed by the city all show that Callexico Transit is the company that has the certificate and can operate in the city, but yet Imperial Rapid Services enters into the picture at some point, and there's no documentation from the city approving that company for operation in the city. Imperial Rapid Services is a listed corporation under the State of California. Again, another issue is the fact, unfortunately, that the corporation has been suspended, and as a result of being suspended corporation, you cannot enter into an agreement, an enforceable agreement, with that company. And so that has been one of the problems that we've had up until this point. We've actually been trying very hard to work with the Castro family and get the bus service back up and running again, but we run into a couple of those problems. One of them being is that the corporation, by law, has been suspended, and as a result, we've tried several different companies to be able to get into business to insure them, but as yet, as of date, the corporation is still suspended and has a problem in that regard. Later on, I'll have the Attorney speak more on that. As I stated, as a result of learning that the insurance certificate was, had been canceled, we contacted the company, we gave them a chance to be able to demonstrate to us that they were insured, we worked with them to try and get them to provide documentation. Once it was found that they did not have documentation and they were not insured, we ordered for them to cease and desist operations. At that point, they waited until they received a written order from the Police Department. Once that written order was received by them, they stopped operation and have been out of operation since then, and that's where it kind of brings us to date. The President of the company, Imperial Rapid Services, as we know him, only because of the association of working out the deficiencies in the program, we understand that Joan Castro is the President and the owner-operator of the company. But again, the official file of the city doesn't reflect that, and he's been advised of that. In working with him, he has brought, to date, three policies to us, and because of either it did not meet state guidelines for what the coverage would be and/or because of the suspended corporation, each of those policies haven't been able to be honored. The first policy that was brought to us was actually on the date of the cease and desist order, which was for $1 million. At that point, he was kind of rushing things a little bit, and we hadn't had a chance to get back to him to tell him what the requirements of the city would be, and the requirements under both PUC law as well as DMV requires that the coverage of the system have a coverage of at least $5 million. Once that was the kind of the benchmark, it was, the question was, is why was I only covered for $1.5 million before, and now you're requiring $5 million? I don't know why, at some point in time, the requirement, the city side of the requirement was lower to $1.5 million, but in previous documentation, prior to 1998, when the company did have a $5 million policy at that time, and for some reason, again, not in the files, the allowed coverage of the company was reduced to $1.5 million. Because the company did lapse, and in order to be able to get the company back into its legal obligations, we were bound to require the $5 million policy that's required by law. As of today, Mr. Castro did provide us with a $5 million policy. The policy is in the name of Imperial Rapid Services doing business as Callexico Transit System. I call the insurance broker behind the policy. The policy is a valid policy, except for, again, because of the suspended corporation of Imperial Rapid Service. So again, a suspended corporation can't enter into a legal agreement under the State At some point in time, and how this kind of came to our attention, at a point in time the company evidently was going to expand, and had contacted and actually made application with the PUC, Public Utilities Commission, in order to be able to provide expanded services. The PUC says that they went into the application process, but at some time during the process, there was a failure to pay the fees, again, as well as to failure to provide insurance, and the PUC permit at that point became revoked as a result of that. But it's kind of a misnomer because, under California law, and actually under PUC law, PUC governs public transportation systems that go outside of the city limit, and if their routes are 98% within the city limits, they're not required to be registered with the PUC. But, again, the PUC law says that it's up to the PUC to make that determination. It's up to the PUC every year in January, once the application has been made, they would actually make a determination that the company does not fall under the PUC law, rather than you going to the company and going to PUC and saying, "Okay, now I'm going outside the city, so now I need to be regulated by you." It's actually another way around. PUC is required by law to look at the routes of the companies and to make a determination that the route is at least 98% within the city and that it would not fall under the regulations of the PUC. So that has never been done. So the PUC is saying is that since the process had stopped, the fees were not paid, that the insurance certificate was not provided, that they never went ahead and made a determination that the route was completely within the city and that they would not fall under PUC regulations. So that's why they still remain under PUC's books and technically under PUC regulation until such time as PUC determines that they do not qualify. And so as a result of that, we worked with PUC to find out what the deficiencies were. That's how we ended up starting to contact the company and work with them to find out their insurance was suspended at that time. The, under today's proceedings, you've been, in the backup, you've been given three options. I'm going to turn it over to the City Attorney at this point, David Stotland, and let him brief you on what those three options are. I'll still remain here in case you have any questions. I think that I've covered pretty much everything we're reporting today.
Thank you and good evening. Again, we are here because Callexico Transit, Callexico Transit has not met the insurance requirements set in the city's ordinance, Section 5.36.130. As of now, the latest attempt they have submitted to try to get insurance together, they've had two problems. Problem one is that it involves Imperial Rapid Services, which is a suspended corporation. What that means is this suspended corporation cannot enter into valid, fully enforceable contracts. So for instance, if that company were to get an insurance policy, the insurance carrier might not need to actually honor that policy if somebody got hurt in an accident and filed a claim against the insurance. So there might not be money to compensate somebody injured if there were collision involving one of these buses. The other problem is that the insurance policies so far have not included, we've not seen evidence of workers' comp insurance to cover the drivers of the buses, which is also an important factor in the assessment. Under your code, and this evening, it seems you have several options. Option one would be to revoke Callexico, all the certificates of public convenience and necessity that Callexico Transit has. If you revoke it, that doesn't mean that they're completely barred ever from doing business again. It means you start the process of looking for a new bus company. If these folks get everything cleared up, they would be eligible to apply for that process along with anybody else. A second option would be a suspension, saying that you're disappointed with what they did, keeping them from operating for a period of time, and then moving on. There are two ways of structuring a suspension. One is suspend them for a certain period of time, at the end of which they can operate again. If you do that, they might still be operating without insurance, but that's one option that's available to you this evening. A second way of structuring a suspension would be a suspension that's going to end at a certain date and results in a revocation if they don't get their act together and get a proper insurance policy and workers' comp policy in place. And Ms. Foster and I can help work on structuring that if that's the approach you want to take. The third option is not to take an action this evening and to simply give staff some direction about what you would like us to do. If you take no action, Callexico Transit will still not have valid insurance, but you're not saying that they're out completely of the game of providing public transit for the people. If they don't have insurance, anybody riding on the bus is still going to be at risk of not having any insurance coverage if the bus gets into a collision. But again, that's one of the options that's available to you. So to put it simply, the choices are revoke, suspend, which will lead to revocation in a certain period of time if they don't comply with your instructions, a suspension for a limited period of time, and then allowing them to drive again, or taking no action and giving staff direction about where you would like us to go. Thank you.
At this point, I think we've covered the points. Any questions from the Council?
I have one. I understand there are different categories or classifications in this industry when they are recorded by, to operate this kind of business. Can you, can someone elaborate on the different styles or different types? I'm talking about passenger stage corporation or a charter party carrier of passengers or a private carrier?
Okay. Each of those are different types of transportation, like a charter bus, the type that you would use to charter cool kids to go to Disneyland.
From one point to another.
So you can hire them as a group. The passenger stage corporation is actually the PUC-regulated type of bus system that we are talking about today, but the passenger stage corporation is the one that is actually regulated by PUC. In other words, if they do enough operations into the county area, that it would require them to be registered under the PUC.
Or beyond that, what was that percentage you said?
98%.
So beyond, if they were going to 3% or above 2%, then they could be under this category?
That's correct, and as to date, the routes, as far as I know them, are actually 100% within the city.
All right. Go ahead.
The, so actually, so in a technical term, the city is looking at a passenger stage corporation. Under DMV laws, Department of Motor Vehicles, they don't distinguish between the two. If you're a public transportation operator in a city, or if you're a public transportation operator under PUC regulation, you're required to be insured exactly the same way. So under DMV law, it doesn't make a distinction between the two.
You made the comment that as long as it's 98% within the city limits, they would not be required to have PUC authority, but it does say here in some of my notes here that to be able to be, to have access to highways, state highways, they must be registered with PUC. And as everybody knows here, Highway 111 is an extension of, I mean, Imperial Avenue is an extension of Highway 111, and of course, you have Birch Street, that's also referred to as Highway 98.
You want to that one? Okay.
We've checked with the PUC, and under the PUC, the critical issue is whether there is, how much they're operating, whether the PUC regulates it or whether you regulate it, really depends on whether they're operating within the city, and whether there's a state highway that travels within the city is not the key question. The question is, is their business just within the city or are they going outside of the city? But whether the PUC regulates them or whether you regulate them, under the Vehicle Code section and under that PUC order, they would be counted as passenger coaches. That's the category that they would fit in because they go to fixed bus stops, and the amount of $5 million is set because if you look at the certificates of public convenience and necessity, you'll see that each of them lists a bus passenger capacity of 30 or more people. In other words, each bus holds 30 or more people, and the $5 million amount is for businesses where the buses hold 16 or more. So that's where the $5 million amount comes from.
Thank you. Any more, go to the public?
We actually need to hear from the certificate holder before the public.
I'm sorry?
We actually need to allow the certificate holder to do his presentation first.
Mr. Juan Castro.
Good evening, Joan Castro, Callexico Transit System, Imperial Rapid Service. It's a little confusing for me as well. I do have $5 million coverage for buses. They are covered for $5 million. They are legally registered under DMV. Our drivers, me, all the, they have their licenses, they have their Class B, they have their passenger endorsements. We have the coverage for insurance. I'm asking, please let us work. Basically. Or any questions?
None at this time. I don't have any. Mr. Hodge?
The issue was that we weren't in compliance with the insurance. We got it up to date. We got the $5 million, and I think the second issue was the business license that was paid up today. So to my understanding, we're in compliance, full compliance.
Those were two issues.
Right. Those were the two issues that were listed, right.
Right, but they just mentioned that there's another issue still outstanding.
Right. Okay. That's something that, I'm sorry, that's something that I feel that can be worked out. The insurance is there, the business license is paid. I think that's something that I can work with city staff, with Chief Newjar, that's something we can work with, you know? So what I'm asking for is if we can work. We've been out of service for 10 days, and people, everywhere I go, they say they need the service. I know, I messed up by letting the insurance lapse, elapsed in July. So I was a month without insurance, I do accept that, and I'm willing, I brought the insurance that is required, and I'm willing to come up to par so I can work, continue to provide a service for the City of Callexico. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Romero, if I may, was there a question on the corporation status?
Yes, that's still...
Yes, I just want to clear, before we go into that question, real quick, when we came over for the hearing tonight, I was presented with a receipt by the Finance Director, and the city business license, as well as the penalties, were paid today to the city. So that, the business license is paid up to date. Okay, you have that. All right. Real quick, I'm going to let the City Attorney speak on the...
All right. To clarify, Imperial Rapid Service is a suspended corporation. What that means is that it can't enter into valid, enforceable contracts, which means that if somebody, if somebody got in a collision with one of their buses, the insurance company can simply say, "We're not going to bother paying on this because Imperial Rapid Service, they're a suspended corporation, and they don't have the right to make enforceable deals." Now, it might be possible for them to not be a suspended corporation. It might be possible for them to fix it, that might require payment of taxes to the state and some other procedures, but right now, since the insurance lists Imperial Rapid Service, it is not going to be enforceable insurance that passengers can rely on. The second thing is that the, the second thing that I would note is that the insurance does not cover workers' comp and workers' compensation insurance, which any business has to have, and we have not yet seen proof that Callexico Transit has workers' compensation insurance to cover their drivers if there is a collision and the driver gets injured.
The insurance policy reads, Joan Castro, Imperial Rapid Service doing business as Callexico Transit System. They took my money, it's a contract that I have with them, I mean, they bind it with me. That's legal right there. Two, workers' comp. We are working with getting a contract with the driver so they can work, and at the end of the year, we can give them a $10.99. So, you know, there's other businesses, not all businesses in California have to have workers' comp, there's ways of taking care of that, so that's another issue.
Okay, Mr. Juan Castro?
Yes, sir.
Are those all your comments?
Yes.
That way I can now take it to the public?
6:53, Olive, El Centro. You know, real, real quick, I used to run Imperial Valley Transit System, and so I'm a little bit knowledgeable, but I'm not really here tonight to complain about, to really complain, because there's an important element that I have not heard anyone really to really discuss. But before I get into that, let me quickly, I'm going fast because I'm on a time limit. Before I get in that, I think one thing that is important is to know the history. If you don't know your history, you'll know nothing. And Callexico Transit, and I can't think, let me go by names, Mr. Castro and Oscar, I see you, I can't think of...
Juan Lopez and...
Mr. Lopez and them. History for transportation started in the City of Callexico. Okay? This is the birth of public transportation is in Callexico, and that is really the reason why I'm here. I'm not here for a particular person, place, or thing. I'm here because I also have been involved in transportation and being a Callexico native. And it is kind of this, it's saddening in a sense to see the way that we're going about this process, when really, the bottom line is, the thing that I have... going about this process, when really, the bottom line is, the thing that I have not heard, is how can we make this work for the people who are dependent upon transportation? We're talking about paper, paper, we're talking about paper this, and paper that, and that, and all staff has to do is to get together with Mr. Castro and work this out, and it could be done. You're losing, you know, there's, I, I, for my estimation, maybe about five thousand people a week, who are dependent upon transportation. And every day, we sit here and talk about this, this, and that, how are these people getting around? You don't have available transportation, you need to make this thing work for the people, and take everything else out of it, 'cause it's, when it comes down to it, it is about the people, and it's something that can be readily fixed. If, if the parties just get together, and your buses could be rolling in two days, probably could roll tomorrow if you want to. But the three options that were presented by the attorney are, they're not for the people. It's someone who is being compensated to come up here to defend the position that the city is taking, or may not be taking. We need solutions that are gonna work for the people of Callexico. And as long as I live, no matter where I live, Callexico is my home. And these people out here, who are now without transportation, they don't deserve this, because there's solutions. And, and, and in conclusion, we talk about the government as a whole, let's stop making it burdensome on people who are in the private sector. This gentleman is in the private sector. He's young, maybe even a little naive, he's admitted that he has made his mistakes. Let's help him, you know, get it together, and put the buses back on the road, and, come on, let's take the people, let the people get where they want. And, and, and lastly, you can take this to the bank, that the retailers are being greatly affected by the lack of public transportation in Callexico. And this is, and this is the birthplace of, of transportation. I gotta go, I was working, but I had to come down here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Mr. Gonzalez, you have your three minutes.
I don't have three minutes, that's on public speaking, sir. Listen, uh, you always try to regulate me, Mr. Romero, and that's wrong, I have a freedom of speech.
Yes, you do, remember, you got the press here, you can talk all you want outside.
Don't take up my time. You know, I'm not surprised, I'm not surprised that we're at this juncture. You know why? Because Oscar Rodriguez is the city manager, he's here to resolve, not create problems for you. I spoke with Oscar seven times last week. He says, "Oscar, the only thing he's gotta do is get insurance." It was one point seven, he got it. Then he said Friday, five million, he's got it right now. Then, now you're saying workman's comp. Tomorrow, you're gonna say flat tires, you know, I don't know. But you know what, the bottom line is, Mr. Castro has lost eight to ten thousand dollars, he can sue you guys for that. And number two, where is the Chamber of Commerce? You know, the Chamber of Commerce receives welfare pro, uh, from, from the city, seventy-five thousand a year. I don't see him supported, supporting private enterprise. You know, I, I think we have a lack of communication, the bottom line. Oscar Rodriguez is incompetent. I think Oscar told me he was gonna resolve it. There's no re, you guys said policy, and he administers it. There's policy already, he should have administered, he didn't do it. You know, the people that suffer, basically, are low income. Students, I suffer, people that use that service, handicapped people, and basically, students that are going to high school, students that are going to junior, I've seen where they drop them off over there on the Quin Camarena. Even the, the visitors, Mexican shoppers that come and leave sales tags to your city, you're losing money, any way you look at it. It's a unpopular decision. Both of you guys are running for reelection, I wanna remind you that. And I hope you turn it down tonight.
And you have.
So when you look at workman's comp, now it's, and then the attorney, he's getting paid, I don't know how much he's getting paid, the city attorney should have done that job. You're, you're, you're wasting money, just like you wasted, in my case, forty thousand dollars, and it didn't get you nowhere. Okay, the other thing is, Mr. Castro has the insurance. He's got the ser, and then this guy's playing ping pong, that's his opinion, whether a corporation or not, it's debatable. I've asked three attorneys in the valley today, and they said he can apply, he can, he can, I hope you deny it, so he can sue your butt. You know, when you look at the bus drivers, their company, you got bus drivers here, and I want you to laugh, 'cause they're not eating, they're not making money. I don't think, none of you three guys have ever worried about where your next meal is coming from. And I'll bet you donuts to dollars, these people have. They're not getting any income. Not only are the workers that you're stopped because of the chief, his inadequacy, the chief was making policy comments right now, he's supposed to protect, when he, what about when the taxi meters, he didn't enforce it for eleven months. Luis Castro was the only one that was, that made, made, uh, problem, I remember, and the chief didn't say nothing. Finally, a chief said, "Yes, I didn't enforce it." There's a lot of laws that the chief doesn't enforce, and he has the gall and the audacity to say that they've been in noncompliance. He's been in noncompliance in many areas. He beat up my son five years ago. He sure did, in front of his mother's house. So, you know, in conclusion, when you look, this is political, gentlemen, and you know it. Mrs. Hurtado, I know seven people that told me that you wanted Luis Castro to lose his company. Seven of your friends. I think you're gonna turn it, I hope you do, and I hope they sue you guys. Individually, not the city too, Mr. Moreno, Mr. Romero, Miss Hurtado doesn't have the money to defend herself. I know Moreno probably doesn't, Romero, so I hope you turn it down.
You left, you left one council member out.
Huh?
You left one council member out.
He's supporting Castro.
Also, you've already briefed them, and you already have that report.
No, he's supporting Castro, I know.
So you already briefed them, so you already know his response. Okay.
Listen, you know why I know?
I got it.
Because I don't have to go to Bangladesh to prove that people are starving. He's voting for Castro. In conclusion, I'm gonna say thank you to the people who came, because what's happening is purely political. Three members of the council, Mr. Hurtado, seven friends, they said that he wants to lose, and he's gonna vote against the revocation. He's gonna be here in two years, we're gonna do everything possible to prevent that. And also, the lawyer, the lawyer, he has an opinion, it's an opinion.
Señor Gonzalez, no, no, I am going to interrupt you, Mr. Gonzalez. Chief, no, no.
He's gonna translate.
No, señor Gonzalez, señor Gonzalez, seize. Señor Gonzalez, seize.
Let me just finish one second.
Seize. You have translators here present, stop, no, you have translator, chief, get ready.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not going to put up with it today.
In conclusion, I, I hope you vote for what is right. He's got the insurance, the thing about workman's comp...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
It's a bunch of dandy, a bunch of crap, and I don't give a rat's ass what you say.
I know you don't. That's already on record, many times over. Yes, it's been on record many times over. Okay, Diana Cortez.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Diana Cortez. Pocos saben de mí. Yo vengo aquí representando la comunidad. Tengo desde el año noventa y cinco, noventa y seis, que soy community development worker, donde obtuve una placa por el County Office of Education, recibí mucho entrenamiento, y sobre todo el entrenamiento de teamwork. De eso quiero hablarles ahora a ustedes, para buscar solución al problema, no hacer más grande los problemas. El punto es este, en el que necesitamos la comunidad, camiones económicos, donde podamos ir, hacer nuestras compras, a ir a trabajar, e llevar nuestros hijos a las escuelas. Ha estado afectándonos tanto a la comunidad, el hecho de no haber camiones, porque el cobro de los taxis, ya había un problema, se está haciendo otro problema, están abusando el cobro de los taxis. La gente me ha dicho a mí, y no me lo va a negar, la señora Hurtado que me vio, el señor Ortega que está corriendo para City Council, que me miraron parada en los bases, ¿verdad?, en la, en la isleta, ahí parada, buscando apoyar a la comunidad que necesitaba subirse a sus bases, porque venían solamente con uno veinticinco para ir a su lugar de trabajo. De allá para acá, ellos buscaban cómo venirse. Los agarraron desprevenidos, nos agarraron desprevenidos, porque vengo hablando por ellos. Otra cosa, están los sueldos, las horas de trabajo muy bajas, no pueden pagar cincuenta dólares a la semana por los taxis. Aparte, ya no nomás, son cincuenta, hay unos que han estado cobrando diez dólares. Y vamos a hablar de regularizar, de poner a la gente en todos, que entren en un derechitos, también hay que fijarnos en los demás. Por qué nada más a, a una compañía? Ahora, una cosa está creando otro problema. Los camioncitos de disabled, de seniors, han tenido que subir a gente que no es deshabitada, que no son seniors. ¿Por qué? Porque no trae la gente para pagar el taxi, tiran para pagar un dólar. Los han subido en áreas donde no pueden levantar gente. Ellos tienen sus regularidades, también tienen sus, como ellos trabajan, y están trabajando en contra de eso, ¿por qué? Por la necesidad que hay de la comunidad. Pensemos en buscar solución, en ayudar a la gente. Nosotros, el pueblo, pusimos a los City Councils en frente, para que hablen por nosotros, para que nos representen, para que busquen soluciones, no problemas, no hagamos más grande el problema. Les pido que apoyen, que apoyen, a que se pueda dar la licencia, que se trabaje, y durante el proceso puedan seguir poniendo los documentos, a como lo está pidiendo el Departamento de Policía, pero sí necesitamos que ustedes nos apoyen, que sean parte de la solución. Muchas gracias, y una cosa más, este, disculpa señor Moreno, pero algo que se me quedó muy grabado en la última, bueno, no fue la última, fue en el Art Center, donde, se me quedó muy grabado, como ahora el tema es de solución, una vez lo escuché, y lo conozco desde hace mucho tiempo, ¿verdad? Creo que sí le dijeron del error que cometió al decir, "Somos parte del problema y no de la solución," ¿recuerda? Okay, quiero creer, en verdad, que te equivocaste en pronunciarlo. No quiero creer que, que lo dijiste, that you really mean it. Okay? Thank you.
Gracias. José Luis Jalal.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es José Luis Jalal, soy residente aquí en la ciudad de Callexico de hace algunos años. Soy periodista, este, estoy aquí en el periódico La Voz de la Frontera y algunos otros medios de comunicación. Este problema que están teniendo hoy ustedes, hoy en día aquí en Callexico, pues ya lo sabemos todos, yo creo en Mexicali y en todo Baja California, ya que está continuamente tenemos llamadas por teléfono, ¿qué está pasando en Callexico, que no hay camiones? ¿Qué está pasando? Porque hoy en día la gente, es obvio que viene a las especiales, vienen a ahorrarse un poquito de dinero, y, y hoy en día estoy mirando, de que ya no les está conviniendo venir a gastar hasta diez dólares para venir a comprar artículos de su primera necesidad, y este, es muy importante, yo creo que también, eh, la gente, nosotros hemos estado diciéndolos un poquito que, que, tenemos, estamos de que pronto se va a resolver este problema, porque así efectivamente nos han dicho de algunos abusos de algunos taxistas, es obvio que no, no dicen nombres y colores tampoco, ni sabores tampoco, pero yo creo que lo que se debe de poner a pensar también, y de dar a conocer también a la ciudadanía, que les viene a traer estas divisas, yo creo que son los que mantienen aquí al Valle Imperial, este, pues también a veces, hay que tomarlas en cuenta, porque nosotros los estamos escuchando todos los días con sus quejas en Mexicali, de que igual, no tienen, al paso que van, pues ellos ya no van a venir, y que lo que ya no son los más afectados, pues esos son todos los comerciantes de todo el Valle Imperial, ¿no? Entonces sí tienen que pensar, tienen que pensar en buscar la manera cómo solucionar el problema de transporte, no mañana, ni pasado, ni cualquier otro día, lo tiene que solucionar ya, porque si no, ahorita vienen las temporadas buenas para todo, para todos los comercios. Y al paso que sigue, ¿qué es lo que va a pasar? Aparte de las largas colas que estamos viviendo continuamente, que están alejando también a los comerciantes, y aquí en la ciudad de Callexico, al parte va a desaparecer los comercios en Callexico. Entonces tienen que ponerse a pensar en los, en los compradores potenciales que es Mexicali, su valle, viene gente de San Luis también a comprar aquí a Callexico, pues yo les pido de favor que no desaparezcan Callexico, yo como residente y aquí sí estoy preocupado, la verdad, entonces sí les pido de favor de que busquen la manera de solucionar este problema lo más pronto posible. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. [APPLAUSE] Asiad Mohamed.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, good evening, councilmen. Uh, I'm sorry, I haven't been here for almost three years with this chamber stocking, but tonight, uh, this is a special thing. I believe the history of Callexico, and being on the street naming committee and involved in, in many things in the city of Callexico, uh, we paralyzed actually the businesses in Callexico. Uh, I know there is a policy, and policy needs to be followed, and I, I think, you know, we have to give a chance. I mean, uh, this is, from what I hear, I just found out, it's fifty years. I mean, fifty years is a long time to put some out of business and punishing him, because we punishing senior citizen, we punishing businesses, again, to businesses, they almost gonna close. Like Price Center, we have to swap needs that we depend on taxes for, for our city to function, and I, and I think that's hurting the city economically, and I think the people coming from across the border, I think we need to leave, uh, really, politics out of it. Uh, politics is politics, and I am not interested in politics now, I'm interested for the senior citizen, for the children, for the businesses that are suffering. Some of these business owners, they don't speak English, and sometimes they are shy to step here and address the council and the public, just because they don't have that ability and, and the shyness. But I, I urge the council, with the public, and for the sake of the community, you know, to, uh, work with, uh, you know, the family, and trying to come up with a solution, because if even one of the councilmen businesses is affected, I will be even, you know, hurt, because if one is hurt, it hurts the whole community. We need to think about it as a family. You know, we are here, a community as a family, and we look for everyone to support one another in order to go on and survive and continue. Otherwise, the city is gonna be a ghost town, and as it is, it is already ghost town. If you look around, many businesses, the swap need is affected for ten days, Price Center, they depend even on forty dollar, if they can sell forty dollar to, to make it for the day, that's what really they, they need. So, we are really preventing their sales, and his business license, and their, you know, there is a lot of things that depend here. So I am asking the councilman, you know, kindly to be kind, and, and give him a chance, and trying to work with them, so we continue to provide the services for the community, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ben Horton.
Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished members of the city council, the reason I come up here is more or less to talk about what is the law. The law stands by itself, there's no question about what the law is about, and sometimes we want to do what's best, but the law has been set together to prevent unnecessary situations. Now, we talk about insurance, if they get the insurance, it's gonna be okay. If they get the state comp, it'll be okay. And if we need a preacher, we got Mr. Oscar here.
I'm your father, not your...
Okay, we got a point here, point of order, Oscar.
You're the one with the...
No, you're the one, open your...
Don't wrong me by that, don't wrong me.
You're the one with the mouth.
I'm the one with the mouth.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Okay, getting back to what I was talking, talking about before I so rudely interrupted.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Okay, we're getting in a little shouting mess. This is what we have to look at.
Mr. Chief, pull him out now, please.
Bye.
That was enough.
I'll wait until you're removed, you're waiting to you, to be removed.
You pay your child support, don't tell them about the law.
I'll take your...
Mr. González.
Okay, getting back to what I was talking about before I so rudely interrupted.
Mr. González.
Okay, we're getting in a little shouting mess, this is what we have to look at.
Mr. Chief, pull him out now please. That was enough.
I'll wait until you're removed, you're waiting to be removed. I'll take your. Okay, bye Oscar. And, okay, I see we got my ex-wife there, okay now can I continue?
Señora Castro, yeah, gracias.
Okay, this is what you have to go with when you're trying to make a statement and I try to make a statement, apparently people are trying to silence me and they can try to do that, if they succeed, so much for that, but everybody talks about freedom of the speech, you're right, everybody has a right to do that, I was trying to help Mr. Castro out but apparently he doesn't want it, okay, okay, that's what I was trying to do, but let's put it to you this way, like I said before, if they do everything that's necessary, if they do everything that's necessary, they will have the right to move the buses and this is what I tried to do before everybody started making comments, the law stands by itself, if we're gonna violate the law, then what kind of society are we? And I'm just saying one thing, I'm running for the school board, but one thing about this, kids use this service, Mr. Castro says he has the insurance, okay, he says he needs to get the corporation, if you do the emergency part, he can talk to the IRS and get it reinstated. I got my nonprofit corporation reinstated the same way, it was revolt and I worked and get it, got it done, that's all he has to do. One thing we have to do in Caléxico, we are a family in Caléxico, we have our issues but we work them out, if we can't work them out, where are we gonna be? And I understand what we're going through here, nobody wants to stop a business that's been around for fifty years, the city council is having this meeting to try to work this out, there are those who might want to silence it and silence it if they can, but I think that this body here is trying to work with Mr. Castro, they're trying to make things work out, if they can, they will, it's just a simple procedure and you know if he needs help, I'm willing to help him, I'm willing to put my hand on, say okay, if you want to get your corporation reinstated, there is ways to push it through and get it done, I have done it and I'm saying to him, I offer my help to Mr. Castro and now, those who want to say that we're gonna force the issue, we can't, because if somebody gets hurt, who's gonna be liable? They go for the deepest pocket and who is gonna be the deepest pocket? The city, now, where we're at here, I come in not for or against, but part of the solution, part of the solution that can work, so that ends my discussion, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Horton. I know he's here somewhere, School Board trustee Jun Kim. Oh, there you are. Atras usted primero.
Buenas tardes, señoras del jurado, porque son jurado, ¿verdad? Yo no los conozco como ustedes no me conocen a mí, yo estoy presentando ahorita como la señora María Estela Molina, yo vengo a apoyar nuestra causa, que no es ninguna causa política, nuestra causa de nosotros es nuestra necesidad que tenemos del transporte, la necesidad que tenemos del transporte, los que no tenemos carro, los que tenemos que transportarnos a diferentes clínicas, a hacer nuestras compras, a diferentes cosas que tenemos que hacer, pero que no podemos utilizar más que un camión, un autobús, que eso es más barato, como dijeron ahorita el señor que habló ahorita, no por poner en mal a los taxis, pero es cierto, los taxistas están abusando, son muy descorteses con uno, son groseros unos y eso me consta a mí, porque yo ya pasé eso, no he querido quejarme porque pues, por uno la pagan todos, ¿verdad? Pero para nosotros, yo en este transporte no tengo uno ni dos, tengo más de veinte años transportándome en él, más de veinte años, allí pues somos como de la familia, muchos de ellos porque pues, de tanto tiempo que tenemos viéndonos, nunca hemos tenido una queja, al menos yo, de que digan son groseros, son estos, son este otro, al contrario, nos sentimos como en la familia, ¿por qué? Porque tenemos años de conocerlos, yo no sé las discrepancias que hay aquí entre ustedes y como dijo el señor Castro, ¿verdad? Nosotros, al menos yo, no sé si mis compañeros que están aquí me apoyen, pero yo hablo, ¿verdad? Por la necesidad nuestra, yo mi salario no me admite estar pagando cinco, seis, diez dólares según lo que a los señores se les antoje pedir, porque según es la distancia que usted va, entonces para nosotros, créamelo, es muy necesario ese autobús, el que ustedes no están privando ahorita, de ese servicio para la comunidad, porque yo soy residente aquí y yo como ciudadana, estoy hablando, ¿verdad? Porque a mí me está quejando, aparte de todos mis compañeros, toda la ciudadanía de aquí de Caléxico, la que como les digo no tiene medios de transporte y también como dijo el señor, la gente que viene de Mexicali, viene con lo poquito que viene a que ser que le rinda aquí, lo poquito que juntan, que ahorran, ¿eh? ¿Para qué? Para venírselos a dejar aquí a sus comercios, ¿mm? Para hablar de que aquí, Caléxico está en boca de todo Mexicali, ¿por qué? Porque aquí se va, viene toda la gente que no puede comprar allá, porque todos lo dan al doble y al triple, entonces la gente aquí viene, ¿por qué? Porque aquí viene a hacer un ahorro, ¿eh? Y ahora ustedes con eso, que se está haciendo, no sé quién, ¿verdad? Lo único que sé que los únicos afectados somos los pobres, el pueblo, somos los afectados. Es todo lo que yo les puedo decir y que pues están dejando también sin trabajo a muchos de los señores que trabajan en el autobús y en el bazo, que también son personas que trabajan para sus familias y que ahorita también se lo están privando de todo eso, entonces yo les digo que ustedes piensen, piensen en que ustedes un día no tengan carro y que tengan que utilizar un medio que no sea taxi, un autobús, una emergencia o que tengan su carro y que se les descomponga, pase el bazo, este del transporte y entonces ustedes lo van a utilizar algún día, porque nunca hay que decir nunca, siempre hay una primera vez, siempre, entonces yo les pido, les pido por favor que le pongan una solución a todo esto, porque como les digo, los afectados somos nosotros.
Sí, señora.
Es todo y disculpen.
Mr. Kim.
me, I'm still try to command my anger. The bus company has insurance and the city stopped them or required them to hire insurance without any merit, not by the law, just the law from the city of Caléxico. That happens, what I believe, to attacking the political reason, nothing else, and if they need to hire insurance, this is a public transportation.
Mr. Kim, direct yourself to the board, not to the public.
Thank you pardon?
Direct yourself to this council, not to the public.
But this one is facing this way, the next time put it this way, I can reach to you guys.
If you get elected, you can ask for that, so please face the council.
Yeah, but this is facing this way.
Face the council.
Then change it this way.
Face the council.
Okay.
I'm sure your body can turn itself.
Oh yes, why not? But this is another issue to you guys, doesn't care about the communities, just only egos on themselves, you don't have any power without their vote, without the community vote, you don't have any power and public transportation, a lot of city, most of the city that subsidizing, I request the city council to consider subsidizing the bus company to keep our public transportation is in safety, even the big city, the LA, they have so much food traffic, they still need the city's help, what happened to our city? They paying a lot of consultant, but they don't spend money for the public transportation and so when they stop the bus, who gets benefit? The, the people working Dennis or people working at the Price Center or Las Palmas, now they paying five dollars for the taxi, instead of they paying for twenty-five and they have to ten dollars spending and come and go, who gets benefit? Who gets to suffer? Maybe some of you guys, they don't have, never have to use the bus, but community, yes. Don't make the law the moving law, which is just convenience, you put out the law to or taking someone, don't make the political attack with hurting the community, or maybe for you, for some council persons, the community is different means for them, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. No oral communications were handed before, we'll take Mrs. Castro's and that'll be the last one.
Good afternoon, my name is Ana Castro, I am, I can speak in behalf of the transportation and my question is to Jennifer Lyon, the city attorney, my question is, is the requirement for the insurance, the amount that you're requiring, the five million, is it your recommendation or is it something that can be worked by the city council?
First let me clarify, Jennifer Lyon isn't here tonight, I'm Lisa Foster filling in for her and I'm sorry about the confusion.
I'm sorry.
And I know we look a little bit alike too.
Yes, you do.
No worries, the five million dollar amount of insurance is set by state law and that is not a discretionary amount that the council can change, it's a matter that's set by the Public Utilities Commission and the Vehicle Code and it's based on the size of the vehicles.
Okay, this company has been in existence for over forty years, fifty years and this company has not had any liabilities, claims to the insurance, I know that for a fact, I was personally taking all the, I used to do the paperwork for the company before my son took over, five years ago or six years ago, and there has not been any claims, you know, and for the city, all of a sudden to require that five million, you know, with the crisis that we have now in the whole state, the whole state of California and the whole United States, basically the world, you know, for you to request more insurance for this company, that it's, the buses only run thirty-five to forty-five miles within the city, you know, there's, it's not a bit big of a risk, but yet you are requiring that they put that five million insurance, that is more expensive for the company and if you're saying that you wanna, you're here to represent the community and the businesses, how is it that you're doing it? By you imposing those requirements, that for the insurance to be higher, that costs more, it costs more and in reality, like I said, for fifty years this company has been working and we have not had a claim, if you want to investigate, you'll find that we have not had a claim, not even for my father-in-law ran the business, my husband ran the business and now that my son has been running the business, yet it has been hurting the company, yet all the cities in California are being subsidized within the city, they're a hundred, a hundred percent subsidized, Alcentro, Imperial, Raleigh, yet Caléxico, when have this city subsidized anything to the transportation of Caléxico? So you mean, you know, we've had grants, been, we've lost them because we haven't used them, they've been returned, you know, why has the city has not offered to assist the transportation? This is the community, this is a business that serviced the whole community for all the businesses, all the businesses out there, I'm sure that they're being affected by this and this is what I want you to know, that for you to raise the, to five million, that affects even more, right now with the situation, that everything, everybody is hurting and you know, we all know, that everybody economically is not doing well, the businesses are not doing well, this is affecting the businesses, these two months, two weeks that the buses have been stopped, is affecting the whole community, the whole community, so it's up to you, if you want to raise it because they, the, that's what the state says, I know that you also do and amend your own rules and you do your own changes based on your community and the need of your community, so this is what I, I want to ask you to look into, because like I said, the way that the bus drivers drive, the, I believe the most high that they drive is forty-five miles an hour and also, based, our buses are not required to have PUC because they only run in the city of Caléxico, we don't, we don't pay commercial licenses, we, plates, we pay regular plates for our buses, even though they're forty-two, we still pay that, because we only, we're very minimal, that we use Highway ninety-eight or one-eleven, so our radius is only seven, seven miles around, that's our radius around the city of Caléxico, so I, I would like for you to please take into consideration all that I've said because this is the truth and like I said, we have not had any claims and for you to raise up to five million, you are hurting the whole community, not just us, but the whole community, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castro. I'll take it to the council now, unless there's something else that you need to share.
No, if there are no more speakers, it's time to close the public hearing and for council to discuss.
All right, Mr. Hunch.
One more.
No, there's nobody, there's no other speaker from here.
All right, I need to go slow and I'm not gonna try to be glib or elegant because I wanna try to make points, so I might jump around, because I didn't have any time to First let me start off by saying that the public comments are absolutely correct, that I have two concerns, I have a concern for the Castro family, that have provided over fifty years of service and their hardship, but I also have a larger concern, all due respect to the Castros and I know, and I think that they agree, the hardships of not having a bus system on our poor, our elderly and our working class, so like the other lady that came up a little while ago and she had to leave, I think she made something of a critical comment, I, I'm gonna try very hard, I don't think I'm being political, I'm looking at the legality of the situation, but I'm gonna sit here and tell you that I'm not sure what the truth is, because I'm getting strong testament from the public and then I'm getting testament from over here, so I'd like to carry on what she indicated and that is that the city step up and work with the Castro family to find out and sit down and, and work all this out about the details, now there's some strong Now, there's some strong arguments made about what the legality is, and with all, and with all due respect, no one is above the law. Even families that I respect the most, or individuals that I respect the most. I'm here to uphold the law and provide the quality of life and public safety for our constituents. So what I need to happen is that we get it straight. Is it absolutely necessary? Is it the truth that, that the company has been suspended by the state? And is it true that it is out of our hands? If it's not, if we can amend, five million dollars is quite a hardship. Looking down the road, is there any way that we could subsidize the company? But ladies and gentlemen, if it is the truth, even if you have this coverage, and I would want the service to be, you know in your heart, we can't do anything illegal. We, we can't allow you to run the businesses if there's no, like the lawyer said, that if something happened because the company is suspended, then they have the power and their means legally not to honor the insurance. And then we're hurting the individuals if they were in an accident, because they wouldn't be covered. So this needs to be determined. And I want it done as fast as possible, so the Castro, I'm not here to undermine the Castro's family, I want to see them up and about as, as if tomorrow. But it has to be on legal grounds. Legal grounds. Let's work with the family. Let's think about if it's possible subsidizing, because they help us, they give a service to the community. But that's down the road. You see, I'm confused, because I did do some research. Since I am on the ICTC commission, I did call, uh, the person that is in second in command and expertise, and this person said, I asked the question, does El Centro subsidize? And as far as if I was listening clearly, she said no. And I was disappointed, because I was hoping that, that they do subsidize. But again, I'm not in a position to say right now what the truth is or what isn't. We need to get the facts straight, we need to get the evidence straight, we need to work with the Castro family. Uh, we need to give them time, so that we can get these buses out there. Uh, I want to see that bus company out. But again, uh, only if, only if we are doing things legally. I believe that we have the five million dollar insurance. If like Mrs. Castro said, legally, let's go to different sources. As you know, as a, as a private individual, if you have some kind of illness, sometimes you want to go to another second opinion, not just one doctor. So all due respect for the lawyers, let's get, let's, let's prove to ourselves as a city, and prove to the Castros, what is the truth here? And then let's work with them, so that we can get their, their business out there. Because the, the biggest sadness here is, is people can't afford taxis. People that have money, they get in their nice cars, they put on their radio and air conditioning. But poor people need to rely on these buses. So at this point, I'm just in a position of giving them more time, but working with them, so not letting them out there to hang and dry. They have the responsibility, come forward with all this, but we can help expedite it. So, whatever we can do, let's help this family and this business, so we can provide the service as soon, as soon as possible to our community members. I hope I made sense, but again, uh, I am not willing to violate the law and put ourselves in risk. What I'm willing is to get it together, work as fast as you can, work with the Castro business, and let's find out what they need to comply with and what they don't need to comply with. Not be political, be factual, evidence, get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunch, Mr. Moreno.
Thank you, Mayor Romero. I think we're here to resolve an issue. I think we're here to make sure that our city is serviced properly. I may have not been in agreement with Mr. Castro on many things, but the, basically, the only thing I have in common with Mr. Castro is that we both come from family businesses. And we both know, when sales are down, it not only hurts the family, but it hurts the people we serve. I think, in the many years that the elder Castro opened the business, I applaud him for continuing this business for years, for servicing this community, for his son, our council member to take over, and now for the third generation, Jovan, to continue this service. I've listened to all the comments out there, and it's true. I see a lot of people riding those buses. I see them go to Walmart, downtown, Santo Tomas, major areas where commerce is taking place. I don't see them anymore. I go downtown, and I wave to this gentleman here, looking, people get on the bus. I like to see the movement, I like to see the city bustle. That means there's traffic, that means there's business, that means there's sales tax dollars. That means it's good. Dr. Asiad, you're right, it's looking like a ghost town down there. I agree with you. I don't want it to look like a ghost town. We need to continue with the service of these buses, and I concur with Mr. Hodge. Be compliant with state, federal, and local guidelines. Make sure that all the paperwork is in order. And when that happens, I'd like to see them up and running again. You know, Mr. Castro and I have had our disagreements in a lot of things, but this is something important to all of us, as a community, as, as the city of Callexico, as, as businessmen, as people that want to go shopping. We have to make a decision tonight, and I think the decision is to resolve a problem, not create more problems. I think if we look at this objectively, and say to ourselves, what is best for Callexico? Is it best that we revoke it completely and wait another thirty days, forty-five days? However long that process takes, to get public transportation in the heart of holiday season? Or we make a decision, that's a tough decision. It may not be popular, but maybe it's right. And that's what we're here for. And I want to look at this, I want to examine this, I'd like to also give them a timeframe. I think it's been ten days since our city's been hurting with the services. Perhaps give them another ten days to get the paperwork in order, to submit it to the city, and get those buses rolling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Mayor Protein Murtado.
Thank you. I have a question for the chief. When, when you approached the insurance company, um, and after they had knowledge that the corporation had been suspended, did they indicate that they're still going to be honoring the insurance policy?
Well, that's, you're asking a company policy that I don't think I can, I can answer on. They are willing to cover no matter what. Whether they come, whether they would pay off in the, in event of an accident is the part that, that nobody could, can, can say.
I think that was important to, um, ask, because, um, the legalities that we're looking at are so serious, that, um, it's important to know how the other agencies that are involved in, in this dilemma are, are going to respond to their not having that, uh, that corporate status in effect.
Can I, can I offer a clarification on that point, that I think might be important to you? It isn't just the insurance company that could potentially invalidate that contract, any, any person could file a lawsuit to do that. The way that, the way that the code is written, the Revenue and Taxation Code, where it talks about contracts that a suspended corporation enters into being voidable, that means any person can file a lawsuit to invalidate the contract. So, you know, sitting here today, I don't know who would want to do that, but even if the insurance company was willing to honor it, another party could file a suit to invalidate the contract.
Anyone could question it, okay. Mrs. Molina, there's several things that I'd like to say and discuss. Mrs. Molina that just spoke now, um, indicated she's a resident of the city of, of Callexico. And just to clarify to those present here, as far as services, I'm wondering if Oscar maybe can help us out with an answer to this, or a little more clarification and information, is that there's two services that provide, um, transportation for our seniors here in Callexico, which is Dial-A-Ride and Ivy Access. Is that correct? Okay, so as far as options are concerned to the senior citizens, we have those two options? Okay, so he's saying yes back there. So I just wanted to make sure that I clarify that. Dial-A-Ride and Ivy Access? When I was reading the backup material, I saw that there was something mentioned about a lease with ABC, ABC Charter Service LLC, I was curious, I was curious to know their, um, relationship.
That, that relationship has since been, has since gone away, so that, that's, as, as of today, that's another change. So they, they have withdrawn their, their agreement.
On page three, it says, under the leases, ABC would maintain the insurance on the buses until a copy of the ABC's insurance policy or something like that, so there's, that, that's null and void.
They withdrawn that.
Okay. Let's see. Somebody mentioned about, um, the chief is supposed to serve and protect, and I think that that's what we're talking about today, is that we're looking to protect our citizens, and even though, I mean, it's a great thing that you haven't had any, um, claims, but who's to say you wouldn't, you know, the next day, everything's possible, so it's our responsibility to protect our citizens, and that's why we're here today. The reason that we, that we were informed that there was an issue with the insurance was because PUC notified us. So I think that's important to say too, um, that this was not anyone going in there and wanting to hurt anyone. This was a, a formal business notification to the city of Callexico. And of course, because we have to have our citizens first and foremost on our minds and their protection, uh, staff then took measures to be able to ensure that we're going to do the right thing for the forty million residents, I mean, forty thousand residents of Callexico. Another clarification that I need is, who exactly is it, as, as you say, we weren't sure, sure, um, who, who the company is that we're working with? Is it Imperial Rapid Service Incorporated? I want that clarification.
That's something, one of the things that we're working with, with, uh, Jovan, is, is that there is no, in the file, there is no documentation of the transfer from, from Luis Castro to Jovan Castro. We all, we all know through dealing with him, that he is, that he is the, the owner of the company. But unfortunately, we don't have anything of record. So at some point, he, and I don't think it's a deal, a deal breaker, but at some point, he's gonna have to come back and make that a legal, uh, a legal thing, a resolution before the council, the fact that he is the owner, in order to be able to keep the certificates, uh, and again, in, in order to show him as the actual holder of the certificate, rather than, than his father.
If I could add something. In the latest, um, attempt to file insurance with the city, uh, the policy is listed as Imperial Rapid Services doing business as Callexico Transit. Now that is part of the confusion, because some of the earlier paperwork says Jovan Castro doing business as Callexico Transit, and some of it says Callexico Transit on its own. So what the relationship between these three companies is, is not clear. Uh, what we do know is that, um, Callexico Transit doesn't appear to be a registered corporation with the Secretary of State. Uh, what we also know is, if you look at Exhibit Nine in the attachments to the handout, uh, you will see that Imperial Rapid Services license has been, um, has been suspended uh, by the Secretary of State, so it is a suspended corporation. And so what that effect is on the other two, we don't know, because the ownership structure is simply not clear.
Okay, so, so we will then, if, if, I believe that clarifying who, who is the operating company is important at this point, to be able to know who the responsible party is. And so I'm, I'm still confused on, on that. There was, there's been some conversation also about the workers' comp coverage, and who's the contractor and who's an employee. And I, as far as I understand, um, workers' comp coverage is for employees of a company, and, and I think that there's such a gray area when you talk about, let's say, for example, this type of employee, if they are an employee, or if they are a contractor. Um, contractors are paid ten ninety-nines, there's no withholdings, and employees get a W-2 with withholdings. And they have workers' comp coverage, unemployment benefits, all that. As far as how I understand, um, the difference, uh, the employee, the employer has much more control over that employee, and tells them what to do, what equipment to use, where to go. And the contractor has much more liberty, they set their own hours, things like that. And I think that that's also a very important clarification that we're gonna require for this, is to understand and that there be some research for that, to have, not, to provide to us, to understand if in fact workers' comp is a requirement here.
If, if I may?
Yes.
And, and I don't want to, they're, they're kind of apples and oranges, so I don't want to compare them, but actually, they're, it's good at this point. The taxis are, each taxi driver is a, is a, a contractor, private contractor. So he, he contracts with the company, he, he basically rents the car from the company, and then he takes care of his own liabilities. In the file for the taxis, we have, we have contracts in there. So you show that you, that you, you're, that, that each of the employees, either, each of the drivers of the taxis are contract people. And so it's very clear in, in that file that that exists. And as, as Jovan said a little while ago, that's his intent to do also. Just up, up to this point, it, he's been taking care of other things, and hasn't been able to get to that part yet. But that is, it, by his earlier testimony, that is his intention. And so we, we will work towards making, making those two kind of the, the same way, of making sure we have a file of the, of the contractors.
I remember that there was a meeting in, I think it was, um, December of two thousand and eleven, where there was a rate adjustment request. And I remember that, uh, Judy was here, and, and you discussed about coming to her and providing her that information. And did that ever happen, Jovan? No, it did not. Okay, so, um, that, that was the day that they asked if you would provide what we're looking at today? Clarification of PUC licensing and all that, because that's when I learned that day that the city has the certificate of public conveniences and that, and that we had to have that information stored here. So that was back in December of two thousand and eleven, and so, um, that was never complied with, right? Okay. The other thing that I'd like to comment on is about subsidizing. I also did some homework and contacted some other agencies about subsidizing, because that, you know, when I look at and evaluate this issue, I think that that's where this whole, uh, situation came to, is because the company had issues, financial, financial issues, and that subsidies would have been helpful. However, in, in wanting to subsidize an organization, a, um, a municipality like ours or a county, would require that these same, um, responsibilities be taken care of, in order to qualify for subsidies, is what I understand. And so, it would just be, would be going back to the same exact situation, in order for a subsidy to be provided, which I think that's a great idea, you'd still have to be in compliance. And so subsidizing, it's not that we don't want to subsidize, or anybody wouldn't want that to, to happen. Subsidies have also, um, auditing and, and reviews by other agencies to ensure that you're using those monies appropriately, and that you're running the, the operation the way it should. I, um, I also heard today in the comments that not, for us not to hurt this community, uh, I think that came from two different people, but that's exactly what we don't want to do. We don't want this community to be hurt. And that is exactly why insurance exists. And so the concern that we, that is before us today is completely valid. That every time that bus is loaded, it's, it's, it's a liability down the street. So as far as the- So as far as the, the intent of what this meeting is about is not to hurt the community, it's to protect the community. And I've always said to a lot of people that this community deserves the best. And I'll say that all the time. We don't have the opportunity right now to just turn our faces and ignore what's happening right now. The word transparency has been coming to my mind consistently throughout this whole ordeal, and that's exactly what we have to do. The community realizes that there's an issue, and we have to do the right thing for the community. Jovan, I know that you don't know me that well, but I remember that when I, we started our business, we were in the same location in Pronto Market. And Mr. Adriano lost that business, and it was a family business as well. And I don't wanna go into too many details about why that happened, but as far as I understand, that was because of failing to comply with the law and the requirements that he had. And that was very unfortunate, I remember those days. It was good times when everyone was out in downtown and having great business, and there was money all over the place, and, and things were great. But things do happen this way, and, and all I can say is that being self-employed, it's not easy. You do go without, and I have gone without. And nobody comes to a self-employed individual to give a handout, we don't. We have to struggle and we have to figure things out on our own, but our first and foremost responsibility is to ensure that we're within compliance. And, and in your case, it's very important, much, much more important because you're transporting people. So I wanted to make sure that I said that because I know that there's a lot of comments about this being political, but, you know, it, it's, it's about following the rules and ensuring that our number one priority is taken care of. As far as decreasing the insurance, I think that that's a legality as well, obviously. We would have to see if that actually, the law allows us to do that. If this council, this is my opinion about that, if this council were to make a decision to reduce the responsibility of insurance, what would other businesses then say? Because other businesses would say then, hey, this is unfair business competition. You're giving so-and-so a break, but what about me? And so when, when I think about things like, like big issues like this, I always think about fairness, and fairness for all. From sports, who's gonna use the fields? Gotta be fair to everybody, everybody lives here. Everybody wants that use, everybody wants business. And I'm pretty sure behind you, there's people who wanna maybe run a business like yours. And so we need to also ensure that we give that, we take care of that responsibility to ensure that we're not going to set a, a bad example and not be fair to, to other competition. I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned. I have seen that you've paid quite a bit, and, and, and that's a lot of, of money you've had to do, and, and especially in a situation right now where people are hurting. But I do have one question, and I guess I can direct it to you, Jovan, which is, the insurance policy that you have in question right now, have you had lapses since you have been the owner? I guess it has been five years, maybe, six years, you said? Have you had lapses other than this? I'm sorry?
There was just a three-week lapse, no. They cancel you, and, and it takes two or three weeks to renew the different policy.
So if we're in 2012, so like 2007, 2008, you have had consistent coverage since then, without lapse? Yeah, I think that's important also for consideration, and, and I'm sorry that we didn't ask that question earlier, is that it's really important to, when we have such a controversial issue like this, to have everything in consideration because of the transparency, number one, and because we are being looked at in, in all fairness to everyone. And also because I believe that the good faith of your business wanting to be in, in, in compliance is very important for all of us to consider. Have you managed this business in good faith? And would we be able to know that we're all gonna sleep comfortable knowing that it will be in good faith from here on in? It's a really big decision. So I thank you for, for the information, and I believe that's all the comments that I have.
Go ahead, Mr. Hodge, one question.
Mr. Mayor's gonna be gracious enough. Jovan, what I'm really, if, if everything was in order in the insurance here, I'd say, let's do it, get those buses running tomorrow. But as you know, there's city law, there's state law, federal law, state and federal supersede city law. So what I'm really, really concerned about is this supposedly suspension on Imperial Rapid Service, is that correct? Imperial Rapid?
Yes.
And if I understand, you're saying that that's out of our hands, Mrs. Attorney, that that is, that's a state mandate or a state law?
Right, that involves the Secretary of State's office, which is the state department that deals with licensing corporations. It, it's something completely separate from the city. It, you know, it may be something relatively easy to work out, such as paying a fee that's owed. I think it just is gonna be a matter of someone contacting the Secretary of State's office to find out what the reason is and how it can be corrected. It, it may not be a, a significant issue.
Jovan, I know where I'm gonna go. I definitely don't wanna revoke here for your company. I want your company out there right away. So you understand the nature of what happened with the suspension? And do you, could you tell me that, that you could get this? Oh, excellent, excellent, okay, very good.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem Mortado.
Thank you.
Okay. One of the things is that I am also from a private business. I have a business where, one of the two businesses, one of the businesses that I have, and it's, and I just opened it a few years ago, is, is warehousing. I can see the activity from the warehousing where I believe that the, the activity and the other services will increase due to the movement of the freight from the warehouse. It's, there's a connection. It's not different, not so much different when you see the movement of people in downtown in the retail stores, where you see them spending more of their disposable income, that you believe that either they're savings and they can do these kinda things, or they, or the economy is taking a little bit of a rebound. Public transportation is a key factor, no doubt about it. Now, one of the things about public transportation, as far as for subsidizing, public transportation is being subsidized here in Callexico through the Dial-A-Ride program, and I don't know if it has any other program. One of the things that Mr. Moreno mentioned earlier about his private business, his family's private business, you get to the point of when does the city get involved in private business and subsidizing so they can continue to exist? Mr. Moreno, did you receive any public subsidies to, super shopping to continue to exist?
No, we didn't.
It, it's, it's an issue that, that one has to be careful with in entertaining the ideas of public subsidizing. Naturally, one of the things is that, in this case, obviously, there's the, there's always gonna be the discussion with the relationship with your father, Mr. Castro, Luis Castro, being one of the council members, and yourself, and the business, and the city and the business working together. You mentioned that the insurance lapsed just for about three weeks. And I'll, I'll ask this question to Legal or to Chief Newjar, when did this PUC authority get revoked? And was it, and why was it revoked?
Okay. The, again, from, unfortunately, just before the meeting tonight, Jovan provided us with some additional information, so it, it kinda clouds it up a little bit. The PUC says that as of February of, of this year is when they show the, the policy as lapsing.
Okay.
Jovan says, and he provided documentation to that fact, that he had another policy that, that, there's, there's two different policies we're talking about, I guess. One is for Imperial Rapid Service, and the other one for Callexico Transit. And so the, the policy that he used in order to get the PUC permit is the one that, that had lapsed earlier, and then, and then the, the other one at mid-year.
Now, Mayor Protem Mortado mentioned regarding the meeting in December. In fact, there was even some confusion there that I believe the family has actually three names. Imperial Rapid Service, Callexico Transit, and I apologize, I forget the other.
Kennedy.
Kennedy. Now, does, is Kennedy impacted by any of this? Are these still in operation, or is it all under the one and one?
All the certificates, although you may see a bus or two that probably still has Kennedy on it, all the certificates are under Callexico Transit system.
Okay, are these certificates are included in this package?
Yes.
That was provided to the council members? I'll also go back to, and this is to a comment by Mrs. Castro. I understand your, is she here? I don't see her. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Castro. The comment about the, the liability insurance at $5 million. Now, as it was mentioned before, and I have to apologize, I forget which council member mentioned it, the, the issue of it being a $5 million policy, I continue, I can assure you that it's state mandate. So the city cannot make it any less. There, what can be recommended for the, the bus company, which, whatever name is, is, is going to be operating under, is to make a petition to the state, or to the PUC or State of California if, under whatever circumstances, they could reduce that liability. It really isn't at the discretion of the city manager, the staff, or this council. Any, any consideration of the city manager, the staff, or this council by reducing that liability and putting it into effect, then the city manager, the staff, and the city council is not going against state laws. And obviously, it's something that we cannot entertain.
Okay, then why did it take you so long to see those, that insurance for so long?
Well, permit me. The attorney, I, I think you mentioned that, I'm sorry, his name?
David Stow.
Okay, my apologies. I, I think you mentioned that back in 1990-something, some years ago, somebody, the dispatching service was paying the $5 million policy?
Yes, it appears that for a number of years prior to 1998, the company was, in fact, paying the $5 million insurance and had a $5 million insurance policy on file with the city.
Did you verify if that amount was the required amount by the state or was it something voluntary? Which I would doubt anyway.
That amount is required by the state under that PUC order, which is attached as one of the exhibits to the staff report.
Okay.
We are not required to use PUC, and that's why we mentioned, we are not under PUC.
Okay, this, I was gonna be going in that direction, Mrs. Castro. If, if they are not mandated under PUC and by the city, then why do we have the situation before us? Well, we have the situation before us right now is because there's no liability insurance.
Right.
But, but, but why are we addressing PUC requirements that are not mandated by PUC?
Because there's a vehicle code section, which is also included in the exhibits to the staff report. It's Vehicle Code Section 16500.5. And under that section, which is the one that gives cities like Callexico the authority to regulate companies that just travel within their city, they say, "Any insurance that you have for those companies has to be of the same amount that would be required for a company regulated by the PUC doing similar stuff."
Okay, so that ordinance itself is supported by the state ordinance for the $5 million policy?
That's right. Vehicle Code Section 16500.5 says they have to comply with the same requirements set forth in the, the PUC regulations. That's correct.
Okay, then, yeah, it's this, you know, that now, that this comes up, you bring it up, and before, you, you know, you guys could see businesses have been operating, and all of a sudden, you ask for it while they were paying the 1.5, you know? And that's where we raised this question, and that's it. Also, I'd like to, you know, you made a comment right now to Mr. Moreno, when was Mr. Moreno's company subsidized? What is the different scenario? The City of California. All cities have what they call, they set aside a fund for transportation. So there's a difference with this type of business. This business is different compared to any commercial, to your business.
Or retail, right. But, but you didn't, you, you do understand that they, some transportation is already subsidized?
Some, some transportation. But there's, the community has a very low, low-income community. So why is it only for seniors when it could be for everybody else? And to accommodate also our neighbors, we should bring business to our community.
I understand, thank you. Okay, again, let's go back to where I was a little while ago, Imperial Rapid System, Callexico Transit System, and Kennedy. This was some confusion back in December. Mr. Jovan Castro, are you going to be putting everything under one name? Because the three business, the three names were still in existence back in December 2011.
I've been going back and forth with Mr. Newjar. I'm trying to get this rolled, just, you know, get the service up. Yeah, it's gonna be one name.
Okay.
Something that I'm gonna file with the city for during these days. I'm working on this.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Jovan Castro. Now, one of the things with insurance policies, the way I understand it, you also have to list every single bin for every bus that is on, in operation? Right, it, it's just that with every attachment of every vehicle, there's a hidden insurance policy that was expired so many years ago. As a matter of fact, we didn't know this one dated. This, this insurance policy, I just, I just kinda picked it up. Yes, March 15th, 1995. Policy, $5 million. And at the other one, I, all the ones I saw before, that was 1.5 million. Yes?
It's never been stated how much insurance by the council at, at any time, never. At 1.5, $5 million, $10 million, it's never been stated anywhere. So that's a confusion on itself, on our part and on the city. And it's just, it's not fair, it's not been.
Can't we pay 1.5 if we want?
Well, I think, back to the same thing.
You got a DMV code that you have to uphold.
As, as Mrs. Castro said, we have, we have never had an incident with, with the bus line. We've never, I, I think the only time, I think somebody actually crashed into one of their buses is, I think, the only accident we have on record. But the, the, at some point, whether it be council or city manager, somebody chose to, to change the amount. As long as the policies were in effect, all we would do is, the police department would check, do they have a policy in effect? Yes, we do, okay. And so it never became to the light to say, okay, this is what you need or you don't need because the policy was in effect. Once it expired, and now we have to research to, to put it back into effect, at this point is when we found out that it had different requirements than it did previously.
Thank you, Chief Newjar. Mr. Juan Castro, there was a letter attached to this that you were asked to cease in your operations when it was discovered that your insurance was, had been expired or whatever. But you continued to, to have your operations. Can you please enlighten us why you decided to do something that you already knew was against code, law, et cetera? One second. Jack? I know that. Oh, yeah, Frank? That's right, Frank. Mr. Quinn? Thank you. Mr. Newjar? Could you clarify the, the issue of, of that letter?
Yes.
The situation with the?
Absolutely. During the time when we were initially trying to work with, with Mr. Castro, the, we had set a tentative time in which he could produce the documents. That time ultimately came and went. We extended it for a few more hours, and again, it was, he was not able to provide the documents. We gave him a verbal order at that time to, to cease operations. And we, it wasn't until about two days later that we were able to actually serve him with a written notice.
And during that time period, there was no service to the public?
During those, from the time of the verbal order to the time of the written order, there was service to the public.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Juan Castro, I'm in business, he was in business, Mayor Protem's in business, obviously, you're in business, Mr. Louis Wong's in business as a restaurant. We all have our requirements. We all have our, Mr. Morris is in business, he knows his requirements. And we have to abide by them, or we get shut down. Like, in my business, the authority is from the federal government. It's not from the state, it's not from the city. I don't comply with them, like, they shut me down. And in that business, there's very little leeway as far as for, you know, give me a chance to fix things up. I'll say that the emotional and sentimental side to these concerns, even though they're heavy, because obviously, it impacts the community as a whole, that's one factor that, yes, you can or should consider, or you may consider. But the bottom line, the law was broken in every aspect. Now, your insurance that you submitted was made very clear that it's not in effect because the name that it's under is not in active status by the State of California. Is that correct? Okay. So, in essence, the insurance policy that was presented, that you were able to present to us in that regard are not a valid insurance policy. I hope that they are what is required. I see this policy total of 22,000?
That's how much it costs.
Wow. And obviously, it's great that you came. Right. Okay, so this is for a 1.5 million policy? So, you have to get to the five million dollar policy?
We're at five million right now. We're at five million. It's just the main, that can be clarified more.
That page? Yes, I see it now, okay. All right. Now... Okay. I'm not in the insurance business, so I don't know if all the line items have to be covered or just a flat five million is good enough. There's no doubt that your busing service is the critical lifeblood of the city of Calexico. And the thing that, obviously, that has brought everybody here is because of what not has been met as far as compliance by your busing company. One thing is, and this is for you to take into consideration, is that if it's revoked or it's suspended, basically, it's the same thing. Because even if it's revoked, you can come back after you fulfill all your obligations. You can get yourself back in the system with the city of Calexico so you can initiate your operations. Now, the suspension part, and I'll mention something to what Councilman Hodge said a little while ago, is that even if we go with suspension, you also have to understand you cannot operate until everything has been complied with. Now, being with the information that was received, it appears that it was, you might say, it gave the appearance that you deliberately broke the law. And then, that would be something where the city can deal with a judge of need be. But, I'm with everybody else. I don't want your business to stop operating. It's part of the livelihood, the lifeblood of the city of Calexico. Now, if this consideration is taken by this council and noting that you cannot operate until everything is in order, you have the clarification of the name, which is the legal entity, has to be recorded by the state. You have to clarify the issue with the workman's comp. You say you're working on that with the drivers. Obviously, you wanna make sure that the city, whatever documents it receives, it's something that it can work with. You have the issue of the, I understand your vehicles also have to go under some form of inspections by the state or by the city?
It's already been done.
It's already been done, they've already been passed. Okay. What other, you took care of your business license fees. I hope that the next time they're due, you'll do them before we get into these kind of situations that you voluntarily come up with and pay those fees.
The state's suspension.
Right, no, the state's suspension, that was one of the first things I said. He has to clear up the issue of the entity with the State of California. If it's Imperial Rapid System, if it's Calexico Transit, or Kennedy. What other concerns are there on the table?
AC, is that a concern? You got a window, open it? Okay.
Well, the other way you can get some breeze is by driving faster, but only the chief will let you do that.
What about smog emissions?
Well, according to the chief, he says I already did the inspections. They've been passed. Are there any other concerns that should be addressed before it goes to a motion by the council? Because I like to have it in record that everything be taken care of.
Based on the information he provided to us today, the only two things that are left are the clearing up of the, I should say, three things. But he needs to get going on the name change within the city so that the proper name goes on the certificate, which is not a deal.
First is with the state. Once he clarifies that with the state, then he can come to the city.
Right. But he needs to get paperwork submitted into the city. He probably needs it from the Secretary of State in order to do that. But, and then the other one is going through with the contracts for the workers so that he has the compensation part taken care of.
The workman's comp.
So, those three things, one of them, and he's already been, he's already working on as far as getting stuff straightened out with the city on the name change, and then, like I say, the state, and then the workers. So, the only two things.
Okay. By getting everything taken care of, then the city can reissue these public convenience, these PCNs?
They actually, at the moment, they still remain in the name of Calexico Transit. They're still in effect. He's under an order to cease and desist until such time as determination is made from this hearing.
Okay, but if it's Calexico Transit and he gets it under Imperial Rapid System, then those are not valid?
Well, they would be reissued under the new name.
That's what we need to clarify. Everything needs to be clarified before you can, one name. I think it would be best to avoid confusion with the public. How many days do you think it will take you to clear everything up? Three years? Oh, three or four days. And I'm sure you're gonna be using the advice from Mrs. Castro. She appears to have all the knowledge about this. So, all you need is a five-day grace period.
But I would give him a cushion just in case.
Yes. Well, no, a cushion is fine, but.
And then, as soon as he gets his paperwork, then he can get started.
All right, what happens if the cushion comes and goes?
Then we would have to revoke it.
Okay, so if we go under automatic revocation?
I believe so.
If the conditions are not met in 10 days?
10 days.
Well, I'm concerned about, is that what has to happen? Revocation after 10 days?
That's a discretionary decision for the council.
Well, remember, Mr. Councilman Hodge. Even if they get a revocation, they can come back and still submit everything once everything is done, even if it's on the 11th day.
But, then there are new ballgame, right? You're competing, bidding, is that correct?
Does it have to go out to bid, City Manager Rodriguez? Or?
Counsel?
Counsel, Chief?
Good question. I don't know. The only time, at this point, since there are certificates that are issued, the only time that a new company can enter in is when a determination is made by the council that the current service is not meeting the needs of the public. So, that has to be a determination of its own. So, I don't think that you can automatically revoke if things aren't done in 10 days. I really don't think that the code allows you to do that.
All right, so if it doesn't allow us to do that?
You would have to serve him with new notice, new notice of a new hearing, and then go through the revocation process over again.
All right, so?
There is a process in the code for how you handle, if somebody is revoked, there is a process for how you can handle what happens if, what happens if it's revoked. Anybody can put in an application to provide transit service to the city of Calexico, and then they would go, these applications would be submitted to council through, and there would be a notice, public hearing process. And you would then look at each application and figure out which one, or which ones will best serve the needs of the people of Calexico and make a determination that way.
Okay, today's the 1st, so 10 days would be the 11th?
What about the next city council meeting?
The 16th?
Would that be enough time?
Is that reasonable, Jovan?
It's under, it's under, it's within two, three days, but, yeah.
Yeah. But we wanna give you a good cushion. We want you to be successful.
Well, one of the things that I do wanna say is that, and with all due respect to all authorities, and I'm saying that sincerely, is that once you meet all your obligations, that you believe that you are ready to operate, that you give a little bit restraint, you know, show a little bit of restraint there by maybe calling for a special meeting so the council can review those.
Well, it won't require, at that point, it won't require, if he has the proper documentation, it won't require the council to review it. What we're doing actually up to today is the city attorney was reviewing the documentation and making a determination whether it was acceptable or not acceptable. The actual code actually says it can be city council or city manager. So, in this case, the 2007 revision allows us a little bit of discretion.
Okay. So, if we go to the 16th and you have not been able to meet all your obligations, you probably won't have any doors to open, right? Okay, so you feel confident that if there's a request to put this on the, if it can be, on the meeting on the 16th, that you will have everything?
If the council desires to move in that direction, the council has the authority to require that it come back to the council.
Yes.
So, if you decided that you were going to suspend up to the 16th and require it to come back to the council for action, or if you got it done prior to that and you are giving us direction to then call a special meeting, then we could do that too. It's all at the discretion of the council.
Or, if I may? No, that one I know, the other one is not. Would it be fair to adjourn this meeting until, or?
The reason that I would say we call a special meeting is because we don't know when that's gonna happen. And so, obviously, we wanna, if we adjourn to a specific meeting, then that's the time and place that we're gonna be meeting. So, rather than to do that, give him the opportunity to resolve that between now and the 16th. And if he resolves it prior to the 16th, we'll be happy to call a special meeting and bring it back to the council. If it's on the 16th, then automatically, he'll come back to the 16th if he's not ready.
Let me ask you this, would we need a special meeting? Could that be done administratively?
Well, it can be. That's why I'm saying it's up to the council. If the council wants it to come back to the council, it's your discretion.
If he's got his ducks in a row, then I don't think we need to come back. I think you would make that decision.
Get his business out there.
Okay.
So, all we need to know is that the staff has the authority to do that? That's gonna be your direction, if that is your direction, and the deadline?
I think, I like that direction better.
And if you can, when you make that determination that Mr. Juan Castro does have all his ducks in order, that if you can obviously inform the council before he begins his operation, so when we, because we're gonna get calls, we're each gonna get calls. That they're out there rolling, so let us know before he opens up his doors again that they're out there operating, so we won't have to be calling the office.
The chief would provide a document to me stating that all the requirements under the MUNI code have been identified and have been appropriately addressed. And then, I would advise the council, and then we would give him the go-ahead.
Okay.
So, I would move that the Calexico Transit system?
Well, you gotta be careful. He still has to figure out a name if it's not gonna be that.
You know who I'm talking about.
Well, maybe we can refer to the business owned by Juan Castro.
Okay. That?
With the busing service.
Within a fortnight, they would have their?
Is this Shakespeare?
Within two weeks, they would have their?
I scored seven years ago, okay.
Number one, their insurance compliance.
Correct.
The compliance with regards to permits, workers' compensation, to allow them, once that all that paperwork is in order, then he would be allowed and submitted to administration. Administration would then provide him the admittance to get the buses rolling, pending all the information that we need and all the approvals from the state and every other agency that needs to approve.
That's correct. The only thing you'd like to add on there is a specific date, so there's no confusion. So, if you're saying two weeks, that would be October 15, closing day.
Right, one fortnight. And then, I'm asking for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Before we go for a vote, just to make a clarification with all those comments and accusations, to reflect that this is not political. This is in the protection of the best interest, not only of the citizens of Calexico, but all those who use our public transportation system, that they have the right also to be protected while they're being provided that service.
Hear, hear, hear.
So, there's a motion, a second. Did you clear that, or did you automatically put yes as an no?
She hasn't cleared it.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question of clarification regarding the motion? What is?
You have to ask him.
Maker of the motion, Mr. Moreno. If the documentation is not submitted by October 15th, what is the direction on that?
Then I think we need to go revocation.
Yes, the hearing would be for a revocation if it hasn't been met.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Castro, you okay with that? Because you feel like, you're confident you can do it in three days? Okay. Come to the meeting on the 16th and make your petition. Council can consider. No city, no attorney?
I think we would much prefer that he not wait until after the close of business on the 15th because then they would automatically terminate and expire. So, if there's an extension that's needed, then he has to do it prior to that if he's not gonna be able to do it by the 15th so that we have a chance to call for a special meeting so that the council can act on it.
Yes, I think that would be prudent. So, would it be 72 hours?
Yeah, the other thing you can do is, just a suggestion, that you could run it through the close of business on the 16th, which is council night. And then, we automatically put it on the agenda. If it's needed, it's needed. If it isn't, it isn't.
Okay, we'll do it that. I'll amend.
Tuesday to 16th.
I'll amend my motion to include that caveat.
Your motion was too harsh, Mr. Moreno. Okay, it's clear. A motion has been made. There's a second, any further discussion? Motion by Mr. Moreno, second by Mr. Hodge. Press the button to display your vote.
And the motion passes with three votes.
Nobody wants you to go close your doors. You did not do the right thing when you continued operation when you already knew where insurance was expired. So, good luck. If nothing else, the meeting's adjourned. If nothing else, the meeting's adjourned.